So we're going to announce that everyone is not here. So Councilman Stiff is not here, but we don't need a motion for this. Is that correct? All right. So all listed items are for discussion and no action will be taken. So the one item we have tonight is the staff on 3.1 will provide the city council with an interactive overview of the city state of waters resources, I'm sorry, the city's state of water resources and request of the policy direction for providing future assured water supplies. Mark Holmes, Water Resources Manager, Gretchen Irwin, Water Resources Advisor, will be present and presenting. Hello there. I just want to remind council to refrain from questions until they finish with their presentation. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council. We're grateful to be before you and have an interactive presentation for the state of water resources for the city and its assured water supplies as we continue planning for the future. The topics that we'll be covering include some of the high points of the 2016 Integrated Water Master Plan, an overview, a brief overview of the assured water supply, discussions of water planning areas two and three which are poised for growth, a very brief review of the city's designation of assured water supplies, and discuss water planning areas four and five and the need for additional assured water supplies. Lastly, we'd like to have a policy discussion on who pays for the new assured water supplies. Again, if this is a technical presentation, if you should have a lot of questions during a particular slide, we would welcome any questions unless you want to wait till the end, of course. You probably recall this map from the presentation from the Integrated Water Master Plan. Just wanted to cover this quickly with you as a recap. The city of Goodyear is divided into five water planning areas. Water planning area number one referred to as a northern planning area. This served water primarily through Liberty Utilities and Epcor Water. And it's all duly north of I-10. Water planning area two is referred to as a central planning area. It's from I-10 to the Gila River. And this is where all potable water is currently being produced and delivered into in water planning area three. Water planning area three is also referred to as the Sierra Estrella Planning Area. It's from the Gila River down to Pecos Road. This has very little groundwater due to the hard rock of the Estrella Mountains, and so all water that is being distributed down in this water planning area is being produced and transported down from water planning area two to water planning area three. And these three water planning areas are located within the West Salt River Sub Basin, the southern extent of the West Salt River Sub Basin. Water planning area four further to the south is referred to as a North Waterman Wash Planning Area. It extends from Pecos to Patterson Road. It's located within the Rainbow Valley Sub Basin. And also is water planning area five, which is the Sonoran Valley Water Planning Area, which is south of Patterson Road. When the Integrated Water Master Plan evaluated the anticipated new growth within the city, it did not anticipate for the next 10 years new development occurring within water planning area four and five. Therefore, it was not analyzed to the extent of water planning area two and three. With that, I'll turn the assured water supply discussion over to Gretchen.
Thank you, Mark. I'll give you a brief overview of the assured water supply program first. So the graphic on this slide shows you what a typical cross-section of the aquifer under Goodyear may look like. There's a groundwater well pumping water from the aquifer that's then treated and delivered to our customers within the city. So there's six components to the assured water supply program, starting with its foundation, which is proving that the state has, proving to the state that the city has a quantity of water both physically and continuously available every year for 100 years. That's known as our wet water. And then we also need to show that the city has the legal authority, which may be permits or water rights or contracts for withdrawals and for use every year again for 100 years. And this is our paper water. The city must also show that we have the financial capability to construct, operate, and maintain a distribution system. And lastly, what we also need to demonstrate that we'll treat it to safe drinking water standards. And lastly, the city must meet the groundwater management plan's conservation requirements and must also be consistent with the management goal for the Phoenix Active Management Area, which is safe yield or the long-term balance between what we withdraw or pump and what we recharge or replenish to the aquifer. So on this slide is a map that shows water planning areas two and three. They're highlighted together in red, and they are located within the southern fringe of the West Salt River Valley Groundwater Sub Basin. Based on the hydrologic analysis for a redesignation of assured water supply and in the Integrated Water Master Plan, it was determined that the maximum amount of water that we could pump from the aquifer every year for 100 years is 13,191 acre feet. This is our wet water supply, and this is what is physically and continuously available. All of the water that we do use, as Mark just said, is pumped within the West Salt River Valley Groundwater Basin. The city would be approaching this limit of 13,191 acre feet soon in the near future. However, the approval of the Salt River Project 100 Year Partnership provided additional water that increased the total physically available water up to 35,000 acre feet per year for 100 years. So that more than doubles our assured water supply. And this agreement also has the flexibility to be expanded to provide additional water supplies if needed. This slide shows a more zoomed-in view of the water planning areas. The city of Goodyear's designation of assured water supply exists just for water planning areas two and three. This is our current service area right now, and this is where most of the development or all of the development is occurring. Any development outside water planning areas two and three that desires to be included within our designation of assured water supply would require extensive planning and also approvals by the Arizona Department of Water Resources. However, water planning areas two and three with additional conservation and some efficiencies are well poised for build-out development. So the state of the water resources for planning areas two and three are very strong. I'll turn it back to Mark.
While water planning areas two and three are well poised for build-out development, again, for those areas, there's a need for an additional 40,500 acre feet of assured water supplies. These would be new assured water supplies for water planning area four and water planning area five. Again, the IWMP did not anticipate growth within water planning areas four and five for the next 10 years and didn't further, did not analyze those areas. So based on projected variability development within water planning areas four and five, and the need for new assured water supplies, a more comprehensive water supply and plan analysis may be needed for Rainbow Valley Sub Basin. Again, just want to remind the council that these are normal growing pains of cities that are continuing to grow, similar to the East Valley Cities, other cities in the Phoenix Metropolitan Area who have done these types of activities for planning and acquisition of new water supplies to stay ahead of growth as it is occurring. You probably recall this pie chart from the Integrated Water Master Plan. It looks at the build-out for the city's water service areas. So that'd be water planning area two through water planning area five. And according to the analysis that was done by that plan, Integrated Water Master Plan, there's a need for 135,000-plus acre feet for build-out of that portion of the city water planning areas two through water planning area five. However, if the city were able to conserve more than, slightly more than 35,000 acre feet, increasing its efficiency, that would be water that would not be needed as part of this total water budget. And therefore, only 40,000, that's indicated by the orange slice of pie there. If we could conserve our way to 35,000, that pie slice would be not needed for new assured water supplies. And only 40,500 acre feet would be needed as new assured water supplies. The other pieces of the pie are the large blue on the upper right, 37,000-plus acre feet. That'll be the amount of reclaimed water that will be available. That's recycled water, and currently we're recharging that to the greatest extent possible today. The yellow slice is the annual rainwater or incidental recharge that occurs every year. It's a renewable supply. The maroon and dark blue are our current Colorado River supplies or our CAP, our subcontract for 10,000-plus acre feet, and are leased with the Gila River Indian Community. At the very top, there's a very small sliver. It's a green slice of 400 acre feet, and we'll have annually some direct deliveries of our reclaimed water for various uses. So with those considerations, based on the additional 40,500 acre feet per year of new assured water supplies needed for water planning area two through five build-out, and the facts that Arizona revised statutes were changed in 2014 whereby traditional development impact fees could not be used for the acquisition of new assured water supplies, the question comes, how do we acquire these water supplies and who pays for these water, water supplies? So for this discussion, I want to throw out some considerations. Should growth pay for itself? Should the city be a partner with growth looking for the acquisition of these new water supplies? And for the discussion purposes, just want to throw out some alternatives for consideration as part of your discussion. There are alternative funding sources such as funding by developers. Look at our current revenue sources as partnership opportunities. We could consider debt policy changes, or we could look at IDAs approving community facility districts. We could also look at inviting private utilities into our city. We already have two utilities that are currently serving customers in the city. And we could look at the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District as another alternative that could meet the assured water supply requirements. However, again, emphasis on that water planning area in four and five are not understood how much water is physically available within that small sub-basin. And this opportunity for the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District may only be a solution for part of the Rainbow Valley area. So based on your discussions, staff would like to craft a recommendation for future consideration. Having clear direction by your discussions would allow us to better develop options to bring back to you in the future. And with that, I would open it up for your discussion and questions or comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great presentation, council. Councilman Pizzillo?
Can you go back to that last slide there, Mark? We're looking at 40,000 acre feet, but you don't know how much water is under the ground. You're looking at paper water, but you're not sure how much real water we have, correct?
That's correct. In Rainbow Valley, if you're referring to, that's correct.
That's what I'm, okay.
We've not done a complete quantification of that small sub-basin, but there is five developers who have locked up approximately 40,000 acre feet within the sub-basin, but how much is left is undetermined at this time.
I would almost think that that's one bit of information you probably need, right? So at some point, we're going to have to know what we're talking about there. But from my first perspective, I don't think one size probably fits all, maybe a combination of each one of those pieces. And again, if you don't have the water there, you don't have the water there. So to me, that's critical. Paper, you gotta have paper and wet. Well, we gotta make sure we have the wet to be able to supply that. So from my perspective, the CAGARD may be part of the issue, and maybe you can, since we can't use, what is it, the fees that we use to purchase the water, they took that away from us from the development fees, is maybe a combination with that, possibly with maybe some private utilities combination. But the only way to find out exactly what combination we need each one of those pieces, you gotta know how much wet water you have. Because if you don't have enough wet water, what options do you have at that point? Where are you going to get the wet water?
And that's a great question. Where do those wet water supplies exist? How much will they cost? And how much will it take to transport them to Rainbow Valley? Again, two-thirds of the city's growth will occur in Rainbow Valley.
And that's why it's important, at least from my perspective, we don't have the entire piece right yet, because that's, to me, is the real important piece that you need to determine. Number one, it's going to be very expensive. If you gotta take that water and move it from another part, whether it's in the city or outside the city, to meet the water, the wet water demands, I think that's going to be your biggest challenge. Then you figure out how you spread those costs out and a variety of options here. From my perspective, I think on the development side, we want to move it to that as much as possible, especially if it's outside the area, which would be the CAGARD or maybe some private utilities. I hate to see us add more debt, because you know how I feel about putting debt on people that have multiple, you know, where we have multiple utility companies, about putting debt on people that's outside our service area. We already know where I stand on that. But I think it's critical. We need to find out what some of those water, wet water options are, from my perspective.
Anybody else? Joanne, go ahead.
Thank you, Jo. That was very insightful and kind of surprised that we're having this discussion before having that answer. So I guess it spurs back in my mind, what timeframe are we speaking of? I mean, is this something we're concerned about right now because there's development that wants to happen within five years, and so we're trying to answer this question now? But, but really, this is just one of the items for development in our southern area that would have to be answered. I mean, there's services. There's many other items that we have to discuss for development in, in that area. I mean, you know, I'm a little gun-shy after seeing what's happened in our Sonoran Valley. And having been through the city in good times, bad times, smart growth and not-so-smart growth, you know, I look at things a little differently. So, you know, I appreciate that you're bringing this to us and that you're obviously hearing something that's potential going on, but certainly I'm not looking at debt. I mean, we have, we have to come up with that 30,000 acre foot amount right now that we have to pay for, and I know that we're looking at that, but that's, that's a big price tag. And I think that, to Jo's point, there's multiple things to look at here. I think that there is, you know, the developer has to take some of this responsibility. There are potential private utilities. We certainly know that we have, from what I've heard, is that there is groundwater down there. So what does that mean? But I, I guess right now, I'm feeling a little bit of the cart before the horse, that I don't have enough answers yet to really understand why we really need to solve this right now. I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Sherri?
And I think I'm on the same page as, as Jo and Joanne right now, because I think it's going to have to be a holistic approach, because there are going to be other developmental needs. What wants to develop there? What size it is? What else do we need? Because we're talking about a community facilities district. Would it just be for the water? We need to look to see what else, what other needs are going to be there to connect that area and plan that appropriately. So I think that might need to be, this is only one piece of that plan. I think we need to see it all kind of start coming together. My other question is with the conservation, 35,000 acre savings of water? I know we're going to hear from the Water Committee, I think, soon. Is that doable? That seems like an awful lot, and I don't know, I guess, what over timeframe that would be. Be great, but I'm not sure.
The water conservation extension, according to the bylaws, is to present to council their recommendations no later than July. So you will hear from them. I think we're programming it right now for June.
Good.
I won't give away any of their recommendations, but I will say that they feel confident. They were given this objective, and they feel pretty confident that
We can get to the
I think they, they feel they can get pretty close to that number. So maybe you will be pleasantly surprised by some of the recommendations where, what they're looking at.
That would be great. That just seems like an awful high number, so I was just hopeful.
It is a very large number. That is becoming a very, very efficient city. Absolutely.
Wally?
Oh, do you want to say something else?
Just, I appreciate all the feedback. Just one comment that, again, just remind the, the analysis, I think you're absolutely right. We, I think we need some further studies as Councilman Pizzillo indicated, knowing the quantification of physical wet water in Rainbow Valley. I think that's part of this action is we're suggesting that I think there's some additional work that needs to be done because the Integrated Water Master Plan did not look in water planning areas four and five, because we did not anticipate growth in the next 10 years. I think there is some interest that may be looking. And if there is, we may have to come up with some answers that under, fully can appreciate what the extent of what's physically available, additional assured water supplies and so forth. But just to remind everybody that the, again, in order for a, a development to move forward, they must have the 100-year assured water supply, meeting all of those requirements, which we just stipulated, the six requirements, physical, continuous, legal, water, water quality, financials, and meeting the management plans and goals. If they're not being met, then they can't get the entitlement. So we want to make sure that we're trying to stay ahead of all development. This is the, again, we are planning out 20, 30, in some cases, 100 years. So we're way out there. So I appreciate your comments, but we're trying to think out and get ahead of some of these issues and try and plan for some of the quantification and numbers that we need to have.
Well, thank you for bringing it forward, Mark. We know people own the land down there, and we know there's developers that are going to want to move because the economy is getting better. So we have to have the water. We understand that. We get that. But we need to, I think, actively figure out how we're going to get it and how much is there and all of those, because you're right, we are planning 20, 25, 50 years out. We may have a developer that wants to build within the next five or 10 years, and we need to do our due diligence, because you know it's going to develop, and we might as well start the process. But I don't want us to study it to death. I, I, we are notorious to study everything. Every time anyone comes before council and they ask for something, they have to go study it. And then we don't know, you know, we're a year, two, three years down the road, and we still haven't solved it. So I know you have certain things you have to do, certain steps. I don't know if there's any way at all that, as we're planning to bring CAP water in, if there's any way to tie in to figuring out how we might get some water down in that area. I don't know, because I'm not that water expert. But I know an expert, so I'm asking you to figure it out for us and then get back to us. But I do know that there's interest in developing in Rainbow Valley. We know as a city, we are applying to put a road down there, right, to extend Estrella Parkway. And I think it's what, taken us six or 10 years now just to get the EIR done or something? I mean, it's just, it's going to take forever. But once we get the okay and we get the funds and that road's going to go in there, we better be ready because it's going to boom. And we want it to boom. We really do. Because like you say, two-thirds of our development is going to be in Rainbow Valley. So thank you. Thank you both very much.
Jo, you have a second comment? Go ahead.
Yes. I think one of the real important parts is to understand what we need and if we gotta transport the water in there is, what I don't want us to have happen is to make sure we have performance bonds or whatever in that area. I don't want to get stuck as we start getting homes or something built down there, and they find out it's too expensive to wheel the water, whatever the case may be, the city out there on the hook. So I think it's also important, if we look at variety of options, whether it happens to be a private utility company, that we make sure we're protected, the city's protected, ensure we're not on the hook for large dollar amounts if something goes south. So just kind of keep that in the back of the mind as well.
Well, I do know that 303 is starting to stimulate conversations for development over that area. And there's some ownership that have been active in and out since 2005, since I've been on the council. So I feel they have the right to hear some answers from us, at least give them some sort of direction on where we're going. And so sometimes when these developers say they know there's water there, they know they have it, well, I would like us to know first, okay? So I really think it's important that, that we start this study. I don't think we can delay this anymore. I wish I could, a crystal ball, and I could say that how the development's going to continue. It hasn't disappointed us so far. It just keeps moving ahead at faster speeds than we're all anticipating, just F's community development and all the work they do. So, you know, we're on the road to this, so let's get prepared for it. And if we have the facts, then that way, when, when the client comes to us and presents, at least we have the answers. And at that time, then we can put it in their, in their hands. This is what we can afford, and this is what we can't afford. And I guess we're going to have a little teamwork here in order to make this happen. But right now, we can't do it. So I think we need more information, and I would like it brought back to us to have that information. I don't want to, I don't want to set a time on this, because I want you to get the information, if it's going to take more time. Yes.
Follow-up.
Yes, go ahead, Joanne.
So to find out the answer, what actual water is down there, how does that happen?
Have a stick. Can we go down there?
Yeah, that's what we're going to wish, we're going to do.
You know the deep it goes.
So, I mean, us asking this, I'm assuming that, I know, I'm assuming that's on our dime and time to find that out, or is that something that's readily available? What are we, you know, I have no idea. What does this mean?
To be quite honest, quantification of Rainbow Valley Sub Basin, there's, there's a lot of wells and drilling activities. We would use all that existing data to create a groundwater model. Now, we could work developing the groundwater model with the Department of Water Resources, because maybe they have some needs as well. We could talk with them. If we want answers fairly quickly on quantifying the total amount of water physically available in the sub-basin, we could perform a model. But the model is strictly generating based on the information that is gathered in the field to quantify how much water is there, again, for every year for 100 years. So it would be virtual pumping of every well that we may even create simulated wells and look at how much water is there to the 100-year point.
Can we do all the above?
Yes, we can do that. Again, we have to look at what the sculpting of that work would be. There is, for the first time, we just did a model in Rainbow Valley. It was looking out not through the entire basin, but just within our small little piece of our planning, our planning area three, which extends into Rainbow Valley.
So, and to follow up to that, the next, I guess, question, and this is just because of, you know, all these years of rumor of what's supposed to be down there of water, is the quality of water. Do we, do we then discuss that? I mean, because then, because I've heard it's extremely salty, and that it's going to take a great deal to process and treat that water. So I don't know how far we go in this discussion, but, but that's something else that I, you know, eventually back to, we need to know
What quality?
We need to know what, what's there and what it means.
Water quality is one of the components of an assured water supply. We look at, I'll just say, generally speaking, the water quality varies throughout that small little sub-basin. Some of it is very salty. Some areas, it's less salty, but it has higher concentrations in fluoride or arsenic or nitrates. Nitrates are present from some of the agriculture. So it's hit or miss for those four components. And so it's varied throughout the entire sub-basin. And we'll have to look at that, because the model could look at the water quality and find out where the production zones would be cost-effective. That's good information if we, the city, decide that it's in the best interest to have those production areas, or that's information we can turn over to another entity who wants to be a water provider. But we have that information. It's easily quantifiable with that same analysis. But it is very important.
And I hope that we will be communicating, because I know there is a development, and what is it, four miles out of the planning area? So when you're looking at that, that's not that far of a distance. And with 303 coming up in that area, and it, it helps council, because when people approach us, we want to say the right thing. We want to do the, we want to do what's right for Goodyear, okay? We want to continue with the development, but we want to, we want to be professional and, and work as a team with them and see where we can go from this, so. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
So
Dan, go ahead.
When we brought the IWMP forward, I think it was December 2016, there, we didn't have any developers knocking on the door at that time in that area. And so we kind of punted and said, we'll come back to that area and plan it out at the time that development interest peaks again. So we are hearing, there is interest. We're coming next Monday, and we're going to talk about all the other services that would be necessary to support growth in that area. We thought it was important tonight to just talk about water resources, because it's sort of nuanced and a little difficult to wrap your head around, especially with the impact fee statute changes not allowing us to pay for the paper water anymore. So as we talk about water infrastructure, drilling wells and treatment, that type of thing, we're fine with impact fees in that scenario. But buying more paper water, we have to find another funding mechanism if we were to go out and do that ourselves. And so we really are asking tonight, from that perspective, does growth pay for growth? Is that our philosophy? And if so, then staff will go back and look at the options available to support that policy direction.
I think that's a general, right, agreement. It pays for itself. I think the, pays for itself, but I don't want to forget teamwork, the yin and yang of it, okay? Be sure that we're investigating some of the things they're saying that they do have and can have, and that counts in the water resources and so forth. So let's just get the real story. And it may take probing, but I think And it may take probing, but I think we can, from the developer, to find out exactly what they're asking and what they're telling us they have and proof of that. But let's be in a positive attitude and just try to see what we can do. We're not going to put our city at risk, all of us know that. And we're not going to put our, our citizens at risk of having to pay for this. And so we've got to find a medium, a midway during this, for this problem, so. Or, I don't know if it's a problem, it's a good problem to have.
An opportunity.
Development, development's a great problem. It's an opportunity. You're right. That was the wrong word to use. So I, I'm kind of excited that, that says we're still moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? As always, Mr. Holmes, it's a nice presentation. Gretchen, thank you very much. You know your water.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we look forward, we don't see you very often anymore, so thank you for coming and thank for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
I do want everybody to know that Councilman Adam Kane in at the last minute of this. Thank you. We know you're a busy guy, and it's not easy to leave your job and get here, so we appreciate you on the tail end. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and knowing that we're not going to start the next meeting until 6 o'clock. So this meeting is adjourned.